Okay, so since you guys are such a little class, this will maybe go faster. Okay, what is the sign of f prime have to be for f to be increasing? For that first one? Okay, so put it greater than zero, what about decreasing?
Yeah, less than zero.
Okay, and then a critical number, remember just that. A critical number, a critical point is when the derivative is zero or...
Or undefined.
undefined, remember both of those count as critical numbers. But to be a min or max, there has to actually be a sign change. Which way does a f prime change for a max?
Positive to negative.
Okay, plus to minus, and then a minimum would be minus to plus. Remember, if it doesn't change sign, it's still a critical number, but it wouldn't be... Both of these two are called extrema. And remember that that refers to both min's and maxes, same thing. Okay, second derivative test, f is concave up when f prime is...
小于等于零.
Okay, f double prime has to be what for it to be concave down?
Less than zero.
Less than zero. Okay, and then remember for both of these, when you do your line test, okay, you kind of set it up like that, put your points on there, do your sign chart, etc., which we'll practice.
Isn't the top one supposed to be f prime?
Um, it depends what you're comparing. If you're comparing concavity, then no. But if it was like that, it'd be like plus, minus, plus. Okay, then your points of inflection are x values where f double prime equals...
Zero.
zero or undefined, and the sign has to change. And remember, it doesn't matter which direction the sign changes, but it has to change either way. Okay, so look at the first one. We want to know when the graph is decreasing. So what do we need to do? First or second derivative test if we want it to be decreasing.
First.
Okay, that's a first derivative test, and what sign do I want it to be?
Negative.
Negative. So we'll take the first derivative, set it equal to zero, and find our critical numbers. What's the first derivative?
15x to the fourth plus 4dx to the third.
Plus 4dx to the third. Okay, then I've set that equal to zero, and you'll have to solve by factoring. What can I take out of both of those?
5x to the cube.
5x cubed. Okay, out of the 15, what's left over?
3x plus 8.
Uh-huh. Which means that I have two critical numbers. I have on the outside, what number here?
And x equals zero, and x equals negative 8 thirds.
And negative 8 thirds. And then from there, you would set up your line chart. Remember, if it's time, you would just start at zero, but if it's x's, it can be anything. So negative 8 thirds would go here, zero would go here. And then say you pick, I don't know, negative 20. Okay, well, what's the sign going to be on the outside if you cube a negative?
Negative.
Stays negative, what about in here?
Negative.
Multiply two negatives, it'd be positive. And then for your middle one, say you pick like negative 1 as your test point. Okay, negative 1 cubed stays negative, but what would happen inside the parentheses? That'd be negative 1 times 3 is negative, 3 plus 8 is positive, so it'd be negative in the middle. And then if you pick a positive number, you cube it as positive, add stuff to it, it's positive. So your graph, remember, these are the signs of f prime. Those tell us what f is doing. When f prime is positive, what is f doing?
Increasing.
Increasing then, decreasing then.
Is it C?
Okay, next question, same exact equation, but now we want points of inflection. So you already have the first derivative here. A point of inflection is not the first derivative, but the...
Second.
Second, so take the derivative one more time. And then remember, when you find those critical numbers, those aren't the answer. It has to change sign too.
Are you using the calculator?
Girl, yes, what's 15 and 15?
I don't know.
30, yeah? So think about, if you have 15 times 4, just do 15 times 2 and then double it. What's 15 times 2? 30. Two more would be 60. So 60x to the 3, what's the next one going to be?
It wouldn't be 60x squared.
120x squared? Because 4 times 3?
No.
It's 12?
Yeah, 6x to the 4.
Yeah? And then what can you take out of both of those? Okay, I can take out 60x squared, yeah? What's left over from the first one? x plus 2. Okay, then what are your two critical numbers? 0 and negative 2. Now, you can skip the sign chart if you remember what we talked about. If it's always positive, it's not going to change sign. So is x squared ever going to get to change sign? If it's squared, it's always positive. So is 0 going to have a sign change?
No.
No. Negative 2 will, 0 will not, so you can pick C. But remember, it never hurts to set up a line test.
Do it.
You could always set up the line test. How would you label the line test? On bottom, what are these the signs of?
F prime, f double prime to f prime.
F. Because remember, f double prime, and I don't know how it comes out, let's find out. If this is a negative 3, I'd square it, that'd be positive. Negative 3 plus 2 would be negative. Then if I picked negative 1, that would stay positive, but negative 1 plus 2 is going to turn... Yeah, so then it would be positive, positive. Then pick 1 over here, positive, positive. So, but remember, for f, you would say that when f double prime is negative, what is f? Concave down. And then concave up, and then concave up. And so then if you're looking for where the concavity changes, you would have to pick only at negative 2. Okay? All right, next one, g is differentiable, g is always less than 0. And you want to find relative extrema. Okay, if I want extrema, remember that's min's and maxes. That means that f prime has to change sign. Now, they already gave you f prime of x right here. What can you factor out of 2x minus 4? 2, what does that leave behind? x minus 2, g of x. What is your critical number from the first chunk?
2.
2? If I were to like set that equal to 0, right? So I'd have 2 is my first one. And then g of x, what does it tell us about g of x?
It's less than 0.
It's always less than 0, so that means that it's not ever going to equal 0. So this is my only critical number. Then I would set up my line test, put 2 on there. Remember, this is f prime, we're trying to figure stuff out about f. And then if I pick a small number, say I pick like 0, right? What is 2 minus 0 in here, positive or negative?
Negative.
Okay, it'd be negative, but what's the sign of g?
Negative.
Also negative.
The positive.
And so if you do a negative times a negative, you would get a positive. So you have to remember that they gave you the sign for g, that it's always negative, so you'd have to factor that into your chart. Then if I pick a number over here, say I pick 3, 3 minus 2 is positive, but if g is negative, that's going to switch the sign.
That is C again.
The worst part, Logan, is that I wrote all three of these questions. And I picked C every time, even though he... Okay, so then what type of extrema is that 2?
Max.
Could have, but you didn't. Okay, so y'all try the next, next two. And y'all can partner up or just work on your own. And then I will give you a cookie. Okay, what rule are you going to need, question on number 3, to take the derivative of that? Good, product rule. Okay, so remember, when you take the derivative of that, you're going to have to use product rule. If you can't get number 3, then you're number 4.
It is C.
Ooh, I have nutter butters too. Do you guys think I have? Or do you want normal chips away? Am I getting one?
You can have this. Oh, okay. I don't know. You can have it too.
No? Logan?
You're Logan.
Nate, he's not even here.
Exactly.
So when you break it down, you have x squared and e to the x. What's the derivative of x squared? Okay, e to the x is... e to the x. Then remember, product rule, you do one plus the other in terms of diagonals. So it would be 2 to the x, e to the x, and then x squared, e to the x. And remember, order there makes no difference. As long as they both get there, you're good. Set it equal to 0. What can I take out of both?
e to the x.
And an x. And what's left over?
x plus 2.
Good. Which means what are your two critical numbers? 0 and negative 2. And then remember, if we want f to be decreasing, we're going to have to do a sign chart to make sure that we have the sign that we want, which is negative, right? So negative 2 here, 0 here. Now, question, e to the x, is that ever negative? Even if I pick a negative x value, e to a power is always going to be positive. So I'm basically going to just cross that out with a big plus sign. Okay, and I'm not even going to worry about that because I know it's always positive. Okay? Then if I pick, let's say, negative 3 here and negative 3 here, what is each of the individual signs? Multiply two negatives, you get a... Positive. Say I pick negative 1 in the middle, that'd be a negative 1, but negative 1 plus 2 is positive. Multiply negative and a positive, it's negative. Then make both of these positive. So if we want it to be decreasing, those are the signs of f prime, then f would be increasing, decreasing, increasing. It would be not C. Got it. Okay, next one. Uh, you want it to be differentiable and decreasing. Okay, then it says the interval of that, on what interval is that decreasing? Okay. First question. These are not the same, yeah? So if I want this to be decreasing, I need to take the what?
Derivative.
What rule are you going to need to take the derivative of f of x squared minus 4x? It would be chain rule, good. So when I take the derivative of y, I would have outside, the derivative of f is what?
F prime.
F prime of x squared minus 4x, but then I have to multiply by the derivative of the middle. So if it's x squared minus 2x, what's the derivative of that?
2x minus 4.
2x minus 4. Now, don't try to GCF between these two. Remember, this is plugged inside of f. So what can I factor out of that second part? Okay, so f prime of x squared minus 4x, 2x minus 2 left over. Okay, now what does it say about f up here? Says it's differentiable and...
Decreasing for all.
Decreasing. So if f is always decreasing, what is f prime always?
Negative.
So it says f is always decreasing for all numbers. So that means that f prime is always negative. So what is my only critical number going to be? 2? And then if I set up a line chart with 2 in it, make sure that you consider that the sign of this matters. So if I plug in 0, what's 0 minus 2? But then I'm multiplying by this, which is also negative, so it would be positive. Then say you pick 3, 3 minus 2 comes out to be positive, but you're multiplying with a negative, so it'd be increasing, decreasing. So then they want to know when is it decreasing, so we would pick which one?
C.
Okay, last one, you want it decreasing and concave up. Are you doing first derivative test, second derivative test, or both? Ooh, I'd have to call this y prime, and that would be y. Good call, Logan. Huh? Yes, I did, suckers. Okay, so number 5, you're doing first derivative test, second derivative test, or both?
Both.
So I'll give you a second to set that up, Okay, so first derivative test, you should have gotten negative 1 and 2. Second derivative test, you should have gotten a half. And then if you want it decreasing and concave up, that would be the overlap of your graphs. So it would be which one? D, half to two. Good. Make sense? We remember all that? Okay, so then when you turn the page, okay, what we're going to be doing now is applying that to particle motion. Okay, so remember, x of t is position, v of t is velocity. Remember, your particles at rest when velocity is 0. And remember that velocity sign determines the direction that your particle is moving. Okay, so if you're direct, if it's positive, then you're going to the right. Negative, you're going to the left. When v of t changes sign, there are critical numbers. Okay, you'll also sometimes see them called critical points on the AP test. That's the same thing. Okay, then remember, integrating velocity is going to tell you how much the position changed. Okay, a lot of times, that's called displacement. And I don't know that you have to know displacement for the test. You could just say change in position. But that's like a physics-y word. And then absolute value of velocity, remember, that tells you the distance traveled. And remember, the difference is that displacement can be negative, but distance can't. Then acceleration tells whether velocity is increasing or decreasing. And so when you integrate acceleration, it tells you how much the velocity changed. So look at number 6. Okay, it gives you a big, long x of t, that's the position. We want to know when it's at rest. What does at rest mean?
Is your velocity.
Okay, so we'd have to find velocity first and then set it equal to 0. Yeah, remember that? We'll go ahead and work that one out and see if you can get it. 4 and what? And then think about, for the particle to be at rest, does there have to be a sign change? No. If it said it has to change direction, then you would want a sign change. But remember, at rest just means it has to be 0. Okay, next part says, on what interval is the velocity decreasing? Okay, remember that if we do velocity decreasing, what is the sign of velocity slope have to be? Negative. And what is velocity's slope called?
Acceleration.
So acceleration would have to be less than 0. So if velocity is decreasing, then you'd have to find the derivative and set it equal to 0. So here's my velocity right here. I'm going to leave the 6 factored out just to make my numbers easier. So v prime, 6 in the front, and I'm just going to kind of ignore the fact that the 6 is even there. What's the derivative of this in here?
2t minus 7.
2t minus 7, the 12 goes away. What is my critical number?
t equals 7 over 2.
Okay, then you'd set up your line test. Remember, the difference is that if it's time, you start at 0. 7 halves would be here, that'd be about 3 and 1/2. Say I plug in 0 just to keep it easy. Well, what's 0 minus 7?
Negative.
Negative. And then if I pick a number bigger than that, say I pick 5, that'd be 10. 2 times 5 is 10, minus 3, positive. Now, if this is acceleration, this is a of t, that tells me what velocity is doing. When acceleration, the slope is negative, what is velocity doing?
Decreasing.
Decreasing. Versus when acceleration is positive, velocity is increasing. So if I want to know when velocity is decreasing, I would say from 0 till 7 halves, that section right there. Okay? So that would be your answer right there. Okay, then the next part asks about speed. What does speed depend on the signs of what go here and here?
Speed, velocity, acceleration.
Velocity and acceleration. And remember, the way that it depends on them is that if you're going to have the same signs, your speed is increasing, if they're opposite, speed is decreasing. And it all has to do with your forces. If they're in the same direction, your magnitude is going to get bigger. Okay, opposite signs, it's going to get smaller. So I already have my velocity one or my acceleration one here. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and set these up on top of each other. This will be my acceleration sign chart, this will be my velocity sign chart. Acceleration, our critical number was 7 halves, and it went minus plus. But then remember, back in the very first part of the question, they never asked us to find signs before. We found the critical numbers, but we never actually found the signs. So my numbers were 3 and 4, so I'm going to put 3 here, 4 here. And then if I plug in, let's say, 0 to this...
Negative, negative, positive, positive.
So it'd be negative times negative is positive. Then, okay, I pick 3 and 1/2, 3 and 1/2 minus 3, but 3 and 1/2 minus 4?
So negative.
It's negative. So multiply a positive and a negative, that'd be negative in the middle. And then after 4, say you pick 12, okay, that'd be positive, positive. So when are your, when is your speed decreasing?
Opposite signs, um, from 0 to negative 7 over 2.
And I'd have to stop at 3, right? Because once I get to 3, they're both negative, and I don't want that. And then the other place, they're opposite signs, is where? Yep, till 4. So you would go from 0 to 3, union, and then 7 halves to 4. If you had to justify, you'd say, because v of t and a of t have opposite signs. And then remember, when we did that, we said, don't say weird things like they don't agree or, you know, anything weird. Just keep it, you know? But on the AP test, if it did. Okay, you never know, Logan. You never know. Okay, next one, we want acceleration to be equal to 0. We have velocity, what do we need to do?
Find derivative.
Okay, well, how do we know? Because it's velocity, we want acceleration, that's the derivative. What rule are you going to need?
K and product.
Product rule, very good. So u is going to be 2t minus 5, v is going to be 2t minus 2 squared. So we're doing product rule on that. What's the derivative of 2t minus 5?
1.
Just 1? Then on my other side, I'm going to have to do chain rule. Okay, so my 2 is going to move down to the front. So it'll be 2, 2t minus 2 is now to what power? It used to be squared. Now it's to the 1. And then when I multiply by the derivative of the middle, that would be like basically a times 1 again. So really, none of those need to be written, but you can. So then my acceleration would be this diagonal times this diagonal. So order doesn't matter. I'm going to put the 2t minus 2 squared first, but either one would be fine. Okay? Yep, then we're going to set it equal to 0 because it says we want it to be equal to 0. It literally writes it out for you. Uh, how do we go from here? What can we factor out? Good, I can take out, if they both have a 2t minus 2, then I'm going to remove that. So my 2t minus 2 will come to the front. What will be left over from my first term here? Uh, okay, that'd be for the second part, but for this first one, I'd have a 2t minus 2 left over plus. And then in the second part, I'd have the 2t minus 5. So remember that both of those terms have to leave something. And then from there, I would get rid of my parentheses and combine my terms. So I have 2t minus 2 plus, that would be 2t minus 10. Can I combine any like terms in there? What's t and 2t? 3t minus what? 12. And then when I look at that, what can I pull out of the 3t minus 12 in there? 3. So you'd have 2t minus 2, 3 left over, 2t minus 4 left over. So your 2t minus 2, once you pull it out, that's not going to change at all. And then this chunk here, we had to separate to make it factorable. So when is our acceleration equal to 0? 2 and 4, which is answer, C. Wow, another C. Um, okay, let's skip 10 for now and go to 11. Okay, um, and I mean, if you read through, it just says, what is the acceleration when the velocity is 0? You'd set it equal to 0, you know, blah, blah, blah. We'll come back to it if we have time. Okay, number 11, how do you find out how far the particle traveled if this is velocity?
You take the integral.
Integral, good, from when to when?
Um, from 0 to 4.
Okay, so see if you can work that one out. So 0 to 4, and then you have 3t to the 1 half, 5t to the 3 halves. So no use of, nothing tricky outside of the fact that you do have fractions in your x line. So add 1, what do you get?
3 over 2.
Yeah, think about, 1 is the same as 2 out of 2. So if I add 1, that would be 2t to the 3 over 2. And then if I divide by 3 over 2, that's the same as multiplying by...
Reciprocal.
2 thirds. But I already had a 3 in the front, so what's going to happen up there with those 3s? These guys are going to cross out. Okay, second term, it was a 3 halves. So if I add 1, that's 2 halves. 3 halves plus 2 halves is... 5 halves. And then if I multiply by the reciprocal of that, because I'm dividing, that'd be 2 fifths. But I already had a 5, what's going to... But I already had a five, what's gonna happen there? Those guys are gonna cross out and just leave the two. So from there, I have two t cubed and square rooted. And that's where a little bit of your Algebra II is gonna come back. Okay, and then plus two. T is to the fifth power and square rooted. And then remember, no plus C because you have endpoints. So then you'd plug in four and then zero. What's gonna happen when I plug in the easy zero? Square root of zero is zero, square root of zero, add those together, still zero. So now do your four. So square root of four here. Two, two cubed is, two times eight is sixteen, plus? Okay, that'd be two. Two to the fifth is, two times two is four, eight, sixteen, thirty-two, but then we have to double it. Sixty-four. So? That'd be, yep. Good job. All right, turn three. Um, okay, this'll probably be the last one. Um, okay, so look at it. Um, you have your velocity equation. First thing it asks you to find is the position at time one. Did they, or am I doing, if this is velocity, do I want a derivative, an integral, or a y-value? Okay, if I want position, that's an integral. When do I already know the position at? Okay, very good. So x of zero is two. That's what I have. What do I want? X at one. So remember, this is gonna be your version B. So remember, for version B, you would say, what you want is what you have, plus the integral from what you have to what you want. So set that up, see if you remember how to do that. So I want what? X of?
Two, one.
One. What do I already know? X of zero. And then I'm gonna integrate between those values in order, from the one that I have to one that I want. So I have it at zero, I want it at one. And then I'm gonna write my actual equation here. Three t squared plus sixteen. What is x of zero here in the front? Two plus antiderivative of three t squared plus sixteen, what would that be? Huh?
Oh, no, taking the antiderivative?
Yeah.
Sixteen, no. T q.
Yeah, the t would be to the three, and then when you divide the three with the old three, it goes away. And then the other one would be t squared, divide two with the six, that's now a three. And then remember again, no plus C because you have endpoints. So you'd plug in one, plug in zero, and then subtract. One plus three gives us four. Zero gives us zero, four minus zero is? Four, plus the initial two that it was already at?
Wouldn't one be five?
Cause it's one cubed is still one. Plus one times three is? Okay, set up the next, the two that have average in it. I want you to think about which ones which. Thirteen and fifteen both say average. One of them's average value, the other one's average rate of change. And you're using this same question on the whole page, this same equation.
So what, fifteen would be a rock?
Fifteen would be a rock because what does it want? Average acceleration. And remember, acceleration is a slope or a derivative. So that means that you would be doing the average rate of change from zero to two. Now, remember, when you write that out on your AP test, it's gonna say, show the calculations. You would say, v of two minus v of zero over two minus zero. And then if I plug in two and zero, I would get those numbers. So I'm gonna write it back up here, but it was three t squared plus sixteen. So if I plug in two, what am I gonna get?
Four, twelve.
So that's twelve plus, twelve is? Twenty-four. Wait. Twelve plus twenty-four is thirty-six, yeah? Then plug in zero. Two minus zero on bottom is just two. And you can leave it like that, but a lot of times it'll say, indicate units of measure. So if this is in meters per second, and this is in seconds, it'd be in meters per second squared. So thirty-six divided by two would be eighteen meters per second squared. Okay, go up to thirteen. What is the formula for number thirteen if you want average velocity or average value?
B over a, whatever that stuff?
Yep. Now, obviously, that's like the generic one, so we're gonna have to plug in our numbers here. But notice that this is for average, average y-value. And we know that it's average y-value because we were given velocity and we want average velocity. So it's the same type of thing. So what would it be for this particular thing? And then three t squared plus sixteen. And you don't have to work that out, just set it up. Okay, then number fourteen. Okay, for the particle considered in question twelve, find the acceleration at three. What are we doing if we have velocity and we want the acceleration? The derivative, very good. So three t squoops, we'd have to take the derivative. So what would the first term be? Okay, and then question, can I just plug in three now? Okay, a of three. So make sure as you go that you label, a of t is a formula, a of three, you're plugging in that value. Okay, so six times three would be eighteen plus six. If you suck at adding, leave it like that. Okay, and it's twenty-four. Okay? Yeah, for the multiple choice ones, I would have to do them. Okay, if you have your sheet, um, so here's my game plan. I know there's not a lot of you in here. But I'm gonna put the answers to the last questions we didn't get to in the pink binder in that crate. So whenever you do them, like, I'll sign your sheet for being here, but hopefully, you care about passing the AP test. So if you do those last questions and wanna check those answers, they'll be in the book, and you can just come and check them. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Huh? Bye y'all, have a good day.